Can, oh, there, can you hear me? There we go. I think, okay. We're scheduled to start our public hearing at six o'clock. This is Tuesday, October 26th. This is the Woodland Hills City Council and we are, I'm Mayor Wendy Prey and we're going to convene a public hearing. The first item at our public hearing is, well, let me just reiterate the fact that any electronic communications we received for public comment before this meeting will be distributed to the, have been distributed to the council, will be distributed to the council and included with our minutes. Anybody, members of the public that are here to speak will have two minutes and we ask them to kindly keep their comments to two minutes and I will give you a 30-second warning so that you have a minute to wind yourself down. The first item of, for our public hearing that we're going to hear comment on is our proposed changes to 10-11-2A, 10-11-2B, and 10-11-2C accessory buildings. And this is a proposed change to the maximum height. Wayne, would you like to just give us a brief summary of why we're doing this?
We, we're looking at our existing ordinance and it is 17 feet from the floor of the accessory building to any part of the roof. And we felt that that was not a good wording of the ordinance, left too much flexibility in it. You could measure to the bottom of the roof and have a total roof of 30, 40, 50 feet if you wanted. So that's why we felt the change was in order and recommending a change to be 24 feet from the floor of the accessory building to the peak of the roof with an allowance for the city to make in the event that, in an agricultural situation, somebody wanted to build a barn, they could come to the city council to get a request to do that without going to the variance, building that into the ordinance to make that an option should that, should that happen in the future.
Okay, thank you. Jody, do, let's see, do we have anybody in the room by raise of hand that would like to make a comment? Public comment? Sure. Yeah, but this is public hearing comment. Do you want to comment?
Want to comment?
If you're gonna comment, you have to do it in the mic. Sorry.
A good one.
All right, any public comment on the changing the, uh, building height for accessory buildings? Okay, hearing no comment, I will close that portion of the meeting. We will now hear comments on, on the proposed ordinance prohibiting the use of semi-trailers and shipping containers as an accessory building. Wayne, do you just wanna?
Yes, currently, that is allowed with our existing ordinance, but we really don't have any criteria, separate criteria for those to be used. And we felt that because of the oddity a little bit, that we needed to have some other criteria. So until we get that criteria, we feel to, we'd like to rec, we recommend to the city council that for the time being, we not allow those devices to be used. We expect it to be temporary until we can come back to the city council with some criteria for using those as accessory buildings. But since there's no prohibition against them now, we felt that we'd like to have a prohibition in the interim period so that we don't get into problems with, with their We just need to identify some additional criteria.
It, and it's mostly safety issues you're considering?
Their safety and also appearance.
Okay.
Issues, we don't want somebody to put one in their front yard.
Okay.
For example, and so, and again, I stress, it's just a temporary situation until we can further ferret it out.
Okay. Is there any comment on the, on the proposed ordinance change that would prohibit the use of semi-trailers and shipping containers? Pella? State your name, please, and just into the mic so we can get in in a minute. Thanks.
Isn't it already established that you can't have things in your front yard, like trailers or anything in front of your house? Isn't that the way it is right now?
No.
It has been, I've been, I mean, I've lived here a long time and that, and you can't park your trailer in front of your house.
There's a setback requirement for the home, but other than that, the criteria is, you may have one for a trailer, but a person, there's other criteria that we need to adopt for using those two conveyances as accessory buildings.
Hey, I'm, I'm new as far as some of these things you guys are discussing, and it just seems to me that a lot of these things are already in the city ordinances, as what people can do and cannot do with their trailers or their, even the accessory buildings that you're talking about. So how important that is, I don't know.
Isn't it just more or less the definition of what an accessory building is with regards to those, those containers, that they've never been moved, I mean, never specifically had those before, they were either sheds or other types of buildings, not just a compartment?
Correct. Again, with a semi-trailer, for example, there's no criteria that they take the wheels off. So somebody could pull a semi-trailer alongside their house with two, four, six, eight wheels on it and leave it there like that as an accessory building. So those are the kind of things that we need to further address if those two items are going to be used as accessory buildings.
And as for some of the things you're mentioning, what you might be referring to are the Property Owners Association codes?
I had this trailer back in 98, and the city was, because they got that fine.
Right.
That was the, was whoopah.
We're CCNRs, yeah.
We don't have whoopah anymore. That was a whoopah thing.
It was carried over.
Right. All right, I saw another hand. Severin?
Just a reminder that when it comes to accessory buildings of over 200 square feet, there has to be a permit issued, and that's one of the things that we are trying to address on the planning commission is to make sure that everyone understands that if you want an accessory building of any kind, that's over 200 square feet, you need a permit. And we've had some situations in the city where people have gone and built one very large without a permit. And so part of what we're trying to address with, in the planning commission is, is this whole process.
Okay. All right, Aaron?
Well, when I moved here, I remember that I was staging some of our stuff because we moved into a temporary house while we built our house, right? And when we did that, we brought a shipping container, dropped it on a lot, put half of our stuff in the storage unit rather than paying a storage rental unit downtown somewhere. And then we moved into our house a few months later and then empty the storage container and got rid of the storage container. And lots of people do pods or other things like that as just a temporary storage. And would this then prohibit them from using that type of storage on their property, even if it's in a temporary basis?
Conditional use permit?
That's something, thanks for mentioning that.
I mean, I know there's other people that have used them as permanent storage units like a shed, but maybe in a temporary setting, maybe it could, something else could be worked around.
All right.
Good question.
Do you have a comment?
Just that it could probably be done under a conditional use permit if it was temporary. Then you could look at each case.
Yeah. All right, any other comments on this proposed ordinance change?
Any from online?
Jody, do you have anybody's hands raised? Hearing no further comment, I will close this portion of the public hearing and we will move on to the, the third thing we're consider, we're hearing input on, and it is proposed changes to 10-8-5, which is the minimum corner lot setback for the front and rear.
Well, I'll hold it down. We've looked at the setbacks on corner lots and what happens is the, on a corner lot, the side setback is required to equal the front setback for safety purposes, for traffic. And it limits, in some cases quite a bit, the available acreage on a lot to build a home. So given certain circumstances, as is outlined in the proposed ordinance, we're proposing to allow a smaller setback at the rear of the lot than what normally would happen on a corner lot, to be able to enlarge the building space for a person that has a corner lot. So that's what's being proposed, the wording change to allow a larger setback on the rear of that lot where it's a corner lot.
A smaller setback.
There's, yeah, smaller setback, yep.
All right, is there any public comment on this proposed change? Pella?
Okay, my, I wanna make sure I'm clear on the understanding of this. If you have a corner lot, you have 50 feet and 50 feet. So if the house is facing toward the front, I can see that being the 50 feet. If on the side road where the house is then being built, I can see that being less because you're already limiting the house 85 feet, 35 on the one side, 50 on this side. And so I'm just curious, what is it gonna be? What is the setback that you're thinking of changing to? Is it 35 feet?
On the rear, what?
Well, it's, say you build your house and it's facing the front of the street, it would be the side of your house that's on, that would be going to the, the street.
Both street sides are considered, it doesn't matter which, they're, they're both considered frontage, so they both have a 50-foot setback.
Yeah, and so what is your consideration?
And so they're, they're considering.
The back, not the side, but the back.
Well, I have a couple of lots right now that I'm trying to develop, and you have a, we have a street going down, a dead-end street, and we have Mountain Vale across the front. So you're saying that 50 feet has to stay on the, on the lot, on the, on the road going down that I'm, that we're adding? Well, see, that, that, that limits.
Anywhere there's a road adjoining the property is a 50-foot setback.
Yeah.
For safety.
So that doesn't make any sense because you're limiting 85 feet of building.
That's why they wanna adjust the, the other side, the 35-foot side, to give you.
Just the rear of the lot?
Yep.
So you're not, you're not talking about changing the side of the?
Nope.
Okay. 10, all right, so 35 feet from the rear, we're talking about nothing else.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Reducing that. Okay.
Do you have a variance on that, if you, if you, if we go to the right people to talk about that? I'm just saying, you know, if you're taking 85 feet away from that lot.
Which is how it's been, from, that, that's how it's been. And so now we're trying to give you back some square footage.
Yeah, but it's at the back, it doesn't really matter on most lots.
But it, but it already exists that there's 50 on the two sides, the front and the side, but we're not taking anything away.
Yeah.
We're just adding.
We're not taking anything away.
I'm not talking about that, I'm just saying that it seems ridiculous to give, a house can't be built within that area if you have a lot that's 200 feet, say, you're taking 85 feet away from, right from the get-go.
Right, that's why they're revisiting this because, but the side, there, there are reasons that, along this, the road, that it's setback 50 feet and some of it's safety, so.
Oh, okay, is that from the center of the road then, 50 feet back, or is it from the actual property line? Yeah, so you're still taking 85 feet away from the, this is a lot.
Two minutes.
Okay, we've, we're timed, and any?
I'm just saying that seems a bit much.
Yep, okay, we hear you. Any further comment on this? Okay, anybody online, Jody? Okay, I'm hearing no further comment, we'll close this portion of the public comment and move on to the fourth and final item, the proposed development and construction design standards for sidewalks, walking paths, bike tra, bike paths, and trails.
The recommend that the city, that the planning commission is making the city council on that is to allow change in ordinance for sidewalks to be on both sides of the street. Right now, they're only on one side, and when some of the design is with a cul-de-sac, it's only on one side of the cul-de-sac. So that, that really doesn't make a lot of sense to have that that way. We, we were looking at bike paths as well, but we could not come to, there's just a lot of other things that need to be worked out with the bike path because of the size of them. So at this point in time, we're recommending that sidewalks be included on both sides of the street, including the full cul-de-sac, where sidewalks are part of the development and construction standards.
Not everywhere in the town, just in those developments?
No, anywhere where there's a sidewalk, yes. And we don't have sidewalks in some parts of the city, so that would not pertain to that, but where we do have sidewalks, we're recommending that they be included on both sides of the street.
Okay, any comment on this? Jody, anybody online?
Steve, can reach and thumb up. Must be Steve there.
I think it's.
Yeah, yeah, this is what happens when I'm trying to do it on my phone and I can't push buttons and I got fat fingers, so.
Well, we actually like the thumbs up, Steve.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, my, I, I guess, I guess I'm a little confused from, from Wayne's discussion if, as to what parts of the city this is now going to be applicable to, principally because the development that we're putting in doesn't include, as far as I'm aware, a plan to put sidewalks on both sides of the street in our, in the development. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that, given the, I don't know what the setbacks are changing or whether this goes, you know, in the right-of-way, I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused on, on that. So I, I guess mine is more a question than a, than a statement at this point.
I can answer that, Mayor, if you'd like.
Sure.
It's where we have curb and gutter, Steve, and it is part of the city right-of-way, where those would be located, but it'd be where we have a curb and gutter situation in the subdivision. Summer Creek does not have curb and gutter.
Okay, so as, as long as we stay with rock line ditch, then we don't have an issue necessarily with the, with the sidewalk, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Wayne.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right?
So generally, generally speaking, the, the development and construction standards have all different cross-sections, all that stuff is negotiated by the developer. If the developer wants rock line ditches and no sidewalks, then that's what he proposes and the city accepts it or denies it. If they don't want rock line ditches and they want sidewalks, that's another option, they present it, if the city accepts it, then that's what they go with. So not all of the standards are required of everyone, just the ones that they negotiate for their development.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further comment on this item? Okay, hearing none, I will close our public hearing and we will move on to our city work session. We have our city attorney, Craig Smith, in attendance, and he is going to give us an update on a lot of the things we have going on.
Thank you. Before I get on my mic, I'm gonna pass out some handout. Thank you.
Oh, do I need to pick up another one? Yeah. You have another one. You need to have one more up here.
Dave wants a page two.
No, I had two page ones.
Oh.
You're just a special person.
Which was not as useful as I had. Thank you, Wayne. Go.
All right, thank you for coming, Craig.
Yes. Yeah, thanks for having me here. My name's Craig Smith, I act as the city attorney for Woodland Hills City, have some for, I don't know, a year, year and a half now, I don't know, time flies. And haven't really for a long time done an update, and this is really just an informational update, that's the kind of what's been happening. There's been a fair amount of controversy about the construction of a residence at 1115 South Woodland Hills Drive. I'm sure everybody kind of knows about that here because it's your community, you're in the middle of it, and there's been concerns by their, by their neighbors. The home is, the residence in question is owned by, uh, Steve, John and Jennifer, let's see, Steve Adams, John and Jennifer Adams. Thank you. I'm sorry, I thought I had that on. And the, uh, the neighbor is the tenant and Megan Fuji who live just next door. And so I'm gonna first kind of give a background of a little bit what's happened with, there's been various litigation and appeal items. The first one I'm listing is, the city is not a party, and this is just for context and informational, information, kind of shows you kind of back when this kind of dispute got started. That was a, a matter of litigation, a lawsuit was brought by the Fujis against the Adams. Woodland Hills is not a party to that, so we have had no involvement really in that case, but we just have a little bit of background information of what's happened on the case. It went through a trial, it then went on appeal to the Utah Court of Appeals. There was a decision rendered on the court, by the Court of Appeals on that. It's in writing here, I don't, I'm gonna really go into that. And that was on June 10th of this year, takes a while to get things through the court. Actually, this moved through faster than most things move in court, I'll be honest with you. Now it's back at the Fourth District Court to determine, the Adams have some claims for damages and attorney's fees that are gonna be determined by that court. Again, that's not a city issue, but just to give you a kind of a baseline of, the next one, number two, Fuji versus City of Woodland Hills, is an appeal, I've got Woodland Hills twice here, I'm sorry, of a, of a decisions that was made on August 8th, 2020, challenging the building instructors approval and interpretation of zoning ordinances concerning the Adams building permit, and, I shouldn't say land use ordinances, but from the construction, including height, being the board of adjustment decision. That got appealed, and, and just to give you a little background of how land use, and we're, we're really talking about two or three different things here when we talk about, not everything is what I would call a land use decision. There are kind of two concurrent things that are happening when somebody wants to build something new and the city build a new structure. One is, are the city zoning and land use regulations. And that, the city has a lot of, you know, freedom to make whatever they want. If you want tall buildings, you can allow that, if you want short, only short buildings, you can allow tall buildings. You know, that's, that, those are the kind of the land, the zoning kind of decisions that are left to each city to make, and as long as you follow the state law, the LUDMA code, which they call it, it's Land Use Development Management Act, you can have a lot of discretion on how you do that. But concurrently, at the same time, those things are being decided and reviewed, you also have what I would call a number of technical issues that are being decided. One everybody knows about is the International Building Code. That's a statewide code, that's adopted by the state of Utah and for, for the whole state, and that is not a land use, in my view, determination, that's a, those are technical building code issues about how, you know, what kind of materials you need to use, all kinds of things. I mean, there's a whole book, it's a very complex book, and, and then we have, along with that, we have what's called the International Residential Code, which is similar to the building code, but it applies just to single-family residences. And then there's a plumbing code, there's a fire code, I mean, we can go, spend a lot of time listing all of the state codes that we have adopted. And the reason I'm trying to make this distinction between the, the land use decisions or regulations and these other kind of technical decisions is, in my view, and again, I could be wrong, but I don't think I am here, that land use decisions have a certain way, a certain, I should say, they have a certain structure as to the appeal process. You know, if somebody wants to appeal and has a, you know, has a difference of opinion with whatever the decision's made, and that process goes through, has two levels, on, on the state level, we, we call it, that's the, the one who makes the decision is the land use authority, that could be a zoning administrator, that could be the planning commission, depending on how you delegate it. That's the, that's the body or person who makes the initial land use decision, and, and then if, if someone is dissatisfied, when I say someone, either the owner of the property or a neighboring property owner, or a person that has a different impact than the general public, that's how, this is out of state law, those are what are called affected parties, they can appeal that, and there is a two-step appeal process. One step is to the land use appeal authority within the city. When they did LUDMA back in about 2005, rewrote all of the land use codes for cities and counties, the, the theory was, you know, you didn't want to have people just appeal to courts and have to go spend money, hire people like me, and spend a lot of time in courts, you wanted to have them be able to resolve as many things as you could at the local city level. And that's why they, that's why that's built into LUDMA, is having the appeal authority, that can be the board of adjustment, as we have it here, some cities have hearing officers who do that, but that's a lay sort of process and it's based on land use. I don't think that process is, is, should be used for technical decisions. And in fact, in the International Building Code, and in the residential code, and some of these other technical codes, they have their own appeal process that are within that code, and the appeal goes to, what, appeals go to a, what's called a board of appeals, and that are people that have certain expertise in the construction industries, which is, makes sense. I don't think, I would be comfortable telling a building official, no, you made a wrong decision about the building code here. I don't know enough about building codes, I worked, I've worked with in my whole legal career, from when I worked at Park City back in the 80s till now, I know a lot of great building officials that I've worked with, but I'm not smart enough to, to second guess what they've done. If they've made a mistake, I think somebody needs, that has the expertise, and typically you have engineers, architects, contractors, other building officials, those are the people that you have on your, your appeal authority. And that's building there. And one of the things, and we'll get to this a little bit more later, but it hasn't been completely clear in our city code here to, to make that, that distinction between these two different types of appeals, and that's one of the things that we get further into, I'll make a recommendation that that's one thing we need to do, because, again, I don't, again, for the same reason, I don't want that board of appeals to be making a decision on whether my building's too tall or not too short, whatever, because they don't, you know, that's not their job. Their job is to, to understand the construction industry and, and how things are Their job is to, to understand the construction industry and, and how things are supposed to be built, how things are built safely, and, and those sorts of things. So, so the things that we're talking about, you know, that, that, in my view, that go to the land use appeal authority, and then you have the right, if you are still dissatisfied and you're either the owner or an affected party, you have the right to further appeals to the fourth district court here in, in Utah County, and, and that's, the couple ones, we're talking about number two is one of those, number three, to get back to my outline, I'm sorry, I got off on a, kind of a side issue. Number three is a similar one, Adams aren't a party, this is another appeal of land use decisions that was made in, on April 4th, 2021, and, you know, the, one of the things we've tried to do as we've looked at these is, a lot of times in, in this situation, we've had a number of issues appealed, and try to, to sort those out and say which ones are properly before the board of appeals, which ones should go to the land use appeal authority, and make sure that we have the proper ones going the proper way, and that's, there's been some dispute about that. The, by the way, number two has, there was a ruling by the district court to dismiss number two, that's been appealed to the court of appeals on Oc- October 18th, and that's in that appellate process. So after the district court, if you're dissatisfied, any case, if you're dissatisfied as a party to the case, and of how it's turned out, you have a right to appeal, that's part of our judicial system, and most of those appeals go to the court of appeals, some go to the supreme court, but that's, that's where that one is.
Where is the court of appeals again? Is that Denver?
No, that's in the, that's in federal court.
That's federal court.
Yeah. So if, if you're in federal court, none of these are in federal court, but if you're in federal court, which sometimes I find myself in, then that's in Denver, that's the 10th Circuit.
Okay, that's.
Our court of appeals is just up in the Matheson Building, and they, they created the court of appeals back in the 1980s just because they felt, the supreme court felt like it was being overworked. Now, are they really overworked? Probably not, but that's just, I'm just making.
So you're saying that number two has gone forth and it's going to be appealed in that appellate court?
Yeah, it's been appealed to that appellate court, and now there's a process, it'll go through there, you file a docketing statement, then you file briefs, then you have oral argument, and it's just starting that process.
That will take a year or two?
Probably a year or two, yeah. Number, yeah.
Point of clarification on that one, so that one, the district court granted dismissal, that's what's appealed.
That's right. Yeah, they, the district court, district judge was, geez, now blanking on his name, he says now.
What's that?
No, it wasn't a Dave, no, it was, I can see his face, he was, he's been there forever, he's now a senior judge, but he, they had him sit down on this case, that's not our choice, that's the court's choice, and he heard, I, you know, I listened to the oral arguments, I didn't make those, we had our, our insurance counsel do that, and then he made a ruling in favor of the city, and that's been appealed. So that's where that is. We have two more appeals, number three and number four, that I want to mention, those are still at the phase where they're in the district court. So those haven't been resolved by the district court yet, because they came along later. All these things go on their own pace, through their own, all the steps, they've recently been consolidated into one case, and will be heard by, and, and just to, another kind of just information is, when you appeal a land use decision, you, you appeal based on the record that's created at the city. That means you don't have a trial per se at the court, but all the information, all the records, all the testimony, whatever's been submitted goes to that court and it, it acts as an appellate body, just like the Utah Supreme Court does, doesn't have, you know, witnesses or testimony, it goes off that record. And so these cases move a little bit faster than some of the other cases go to district court, because you don't have that long process of back gathering, which attorneys call discovery, and then you don't have to have a, you know, multi-day trial, sometimes I had one that was scheduled for, you know, three weeks, that fortunately settled, but instead you have arguments, oral arguments based on that record, and that's the process that, again, that state law process that we follow.
It's all based on just records then?
Yeah, so.
So, so can you tell me really quickly the difference between when someone requests, a grandma request for public documents versus a subpoena, are they both equally accessible to the court, or is one?
Well, a subpoena, it always carries the power of the court behind it, which is if you don't respond to it, you can find yourself in jail. We can't do that with grandma, that's not how it works, but.
Because they're both requests for records, but just from a different way.
Right. And subpoenas are broader and can request more things than a grandma request can. But again, a subpoena's under the power of the court, and if you're not happy with a, let's say, somebody files a subpoena and you don't feel that's a proper subpoena, you have the right, you can make what's called a motion to quash the subpoena and ask the court to not allow them to get those records. With a grandma request, it's not quite like that, and, and grandma requests are for city records, obviously, you know, subpoenas can be issued to any private individual or company or whoever, every city, whatever. Grandma requests are only with governments, entities like the city, and they are only for existing records that the city has, you don't create new records to answer a grandma request, you don't answer questions, it's just part of the transparency, you know, in government to say, okay, if there's a document that's not, and there are certain documents that are not subject to grandma, for example, drafts of documents are my legal opinion, which I'm not giving today here, if I write a letter to the city council saying this is my legal opinion of what you should do, or my legal advice, that's not subject to grandma, because that's attorney-client privilege, there's a privilege in the courts for that, that wouldn't be subject to a subpoena either. But, you know, there's, there's certain things that are not subject to grandma, other things that are, and then the process you have with grandma, if someone is unhappy with the, what's got produced, or don't feel it was proper, and also, by the way, you can also charge a fee for grandma, because it takes time. You know, and I, Jody's not smiling, but she knows how much time this can take, and I've been involved with grandma requests on both sides, and, you know, it takes time to respond to those, and so they allow you to take a fee for the copies and the time that's put into it. But anyways, if someone is unhappy with the grandma response, or the documents they get, they don't think they got all the documents, or there's still documents they should have gotten, they have an appeal process to, they have actually a, a records ombudsman that you can go for, and they have mediation, and they can also have a board where they make decisions on that. And that's how the grandma process works. But all the records that are in this, on these appeals, they're all, records are all, they're numbered, and I guess you've probably done this, Jody, a couple times, haven't you? And then they're, they're numbed, given individual numbers, they're provided to the court, and, you know, if the appellant or the city or somebody feels like that some of the records that should have been, were part of the appeal, weren't sent, they can, you know, make a motion or have the court to, to make sure you got a complete record, and that's, that's, that's how those are heard. So, so we've got two pending ones, other than the one that's at the court of appeals, those are the two, the, I've got the case numbers, those are number three and four on the paper. Again, those are just kind of starting the court process, and likely, they'll be heard on, in the same way that the number two was, which is based on a motion, either to dismiss or motion for summary judgment, based on the records, and there'll be argument, and there'll be a decision by the court. So that's kind of give you an update of, of what we've got pending in court involving this situation. Unless there's more questions about that, I'm gonna talk a little bit, we recently had a private property ombudsman's opinion that was issued, I want to inform the city council about that, you've probably seen copies of it, I think they've been well circulated. First of all, let me just tell you who the private property ombudsman is, or when I say it is, it's not a specific person, it's an office. It was created fifteen, twenty, maybe twenty years ago by the state of Utah, and it's so, private citizens wouldn't have to hire attorneys to have certain land use and, and eminent domain issues resolved, and there was ways to do that. For example, so if, if, like, for example, right now in the Birdseye area, I'm representing an individual, and Pacific Court is coming through and putting in a high, high voltage power line through their property, well, under the ombudsman's office, I can ask the ombudsman to require them to get a second appraisal, they have to get one appraisal to start the case, which they have, we can get a second appraisal that's paid for by the, the condemning authority. So it was the city, it'd be the city, in this case it's Pacific Court, that's doing it, so they do that, and then they have a mediation process. One of the other things that the ombudsman's office does is they do what they call ombudsman's opinions, where if you ask them a question on a land use issue, they can, they will, they will research it and issue an opinion, and that's what happened here in this situation, they, the Fugeas asked for ombudsman's opinion, and that was clear back, again, these things sometimes move kind of slowly too, that was clear back in the first of this year, well, it was actually requested in, in.
November.
In December of last year, and it finally got one issued, and it was on some appeal issues that were before the, that have been since resolved or dealt with by the court, so it's kind of a little bit moot that way, but it's an important and helpful document for us as a city to see. The ombudsman came up with some determinations, and I'll address a couple of those that the ombudsman, again, and these are advisory opinions, they don't have the, the force of law, it's not like the ombudsman, and I used to have, working for me, who, a person later became the ombudsman, now he's working on a project here in the city, for one of the developers, but, you know, it's their opinion on things, and they do a pretty good job, and they do their best on those, those things. Had questions about what things, you know, could be appealed, and what's, and, and different appeals, and it was, it was helpful, in my view, to get that opinion, even though I don't think it has any much real-world effect, because most, basically all the things that happened, already happened that was subject of that opinion, but I, the things I think, I'll mention a couple of things I think that were helpful is, is, one of the things I don't think we've done as good a job as a city and, as we could, is to clarify what I talked about earlier, which things are land use appeals, which things are technical appeals, and we have kind of a mix of that. We also had, there's also some confusion, I'm gonna pick this up, we have what's called the City of Woodland Hills Development and Construction Standards, you've probably all seen this document, and, but most cities have these, they're typically used for public improvements and subdivisions, that's typically, the typical, you know, those are, those are installed by the developer, not by the city, and obviously, you know, one thing I learned working at Park City many years ago, that, you know, they build all these roads, they were just doing Deer Valley, this is how old I am, I'm sorry I'm that old, but they were, they were just doing the Deer Valley at that time, and within two years, all the roads failed in Deer Valley, because they weren't built to the standards that they should have been, because Park City didn't have standard at that time, it was, it was still kind of a backwards place, it's not anymore, obviously, but at that time, you know, we were still, you know, still kind of just the, and so, most cities and counties have these standards that they have to make sure that the public improvements, which the city ends up taking care of and using tax dollars to take care of, don't fail in two years, because that was picked up by all, you can imagine that the developers didn't like come up and say, well, we're really sorry, here's a big check for rebuilding all of these streets, no, the city was responsible for that. In our situation, and these are very different, the problem we, that was discovered by the ombudsman, and I think is something we should address, again, that's up to the council, is that where these are applicable to, typically, these are public improvements for subdivisions, but it's unclear in our code of whether these also apply to an individual house, and that's, in my view, not the purpose of that. If there's something we need to add to that, I think we need to clarify when these are used, these are used when you're building the streets, the sidewalks, the curb and gutter, you know, it may not be applicable to somebody that's building a gazebo in their backyard, because, you know, that's, that's not what they're intended for. They're not gonna, that gazebo's not gonna become the city's responsibility, city property, city's responsibility to maintain and keep up, and the other thing that is, was unclear in our code is whether these were appealed as land use, a land use document or as a technical document. I think I've already made it pretty clear that my view is, this is a technical document, and if we're gonna have an appeal process, it should go to somebody with technical expertise, not to the planning commission or the board of adjustment, because again, I don't know how much, you know, how thick asphalt should be on the streets, and, you know, that, or what kind of asphalt, or what you do here, or how, you know, how you do these things, and if there's a, and, yeah, and, you know, like anybody else, the city can make mistakes, and there should be a, a way to appeal it, but again, it should go to the proper thing, and that's, those are a couple of things that the ombudsman pointed out, that we were not doing as we can, and so one of my recommendations to the city council is that we need to go back and do some clarifications in our city code, to clarify, you know, codes like this, what they apply to, what they don't apply to, if they're appealed, where the appeal goes to a technical appeal body, you know, we could use the same one as the, we'd use for the building code, that's the board of appeals, it's in the building code, again, those are people that have construction, engineering, those kinds of backgrounds, and that will help us avoid these kinds of situations where there's confusion about this, and you could end up with having, you know, I think, I guess the worst case that I would suggest would be is, you know, if you had a lay board overrules something and it was a life safety issue, which again, when you're talking about these technical codes, we're talking about life safety issues, that's why we have building codes, I mean, building codes are to make sure things are built, so that you don't have to worry about the roof caving in or, you know, the forest sinking, you know, those sorts of things, so, I guess the worst case, you could have a lay board overrule a building official and make something dangerous for people to live in, we don't want that. So that's with, with the ombudsman opinion, I have one more area, I'm sorry I'm taking so much time, but I have one more area I want to talk about, and that is kind of how the city's approaching this whole situation that we've had, you know, obviously, we are not the Fugeas, we are not the Adams, we are not trying to pick winners and losers, or who we like and don't like, we are the regulator, and we're kind of caught in the middle, and we have to make certain decisions as a regulator, our building official has to make building code decisions, our engineering people have to make, you know, whichever it is, have to make, the, the planning commission has to make land use decisions, we have different people to make those decisions, and that's our role, our role is to make those decisions, that's why we're here, and, and to then enforce these, enforce those decisions. And so, as, as, you know, as we came, I became more familiar with what was going on here, I recommended to the mayor a couple of things. One is, we set up a, a meeting that we had with, he goes over in Benjamin, his name's Ron Ivy, he, when I worked in Park City, he's retired now, because, you know, it's been a long time ago, he was the building official, and he was, I've used him for an expert for years, he's the best building official I've ever dealt with, I asked Ron, and he didn't even charge for this, it was nice of him to do that, to come and look at things and, and meet with the city, met with the mayor, gave us some advice of how we should approach these things, and what that kind of led us, that and what the mayor's direction to me was, we want to do the right thing, and we want to protect health, health and safety of people, that's our job. And what that kind of led us to was then also bringing on a independent consultant, his name is David Alter, he's a professional civil engineer, he's also a professional structural engineer, not many people have both those qualifications, he works for the firm of enzyme engineering, which is a firm I've worked with a number of times, it's a very good engineering firm, they'd never worked for the city, because we wanted to have someone who was independent, and we, we hired Mr. Alter to come in and be our independent review expert because of the questions that were being raised, and this is what he's done, and he's still actually doing that. So when it comes to the Adams home, there are kind of two separate areas that I think we need to think of separately, and this is actually what the ombudsman also recognized in the ombudsman's opinion, we have certain things that have already been constructed. The home's nearly done, it's back to being lived in under temporary certificate of occupancy right now, and the approach that was taken to those, to anything, like, if there were questions about any of that, the approach that was taken by David Alter was not so much strict compliance with the building code, because as the ombudsman recognized, once things are built, you have a, don't have much ability to address them other than if there's life safety issues. And for, and that's what we asked David Alter, he came down, did a full inspection of the Adams, the Adams allowed him to come on, did an inspection, and so think, for things that were in place, we asked him to review those under that standard. For things that still had yet to be completed, principally a, a wall or a grating between the two properties and the drainage plan landscaping, we asked David Alter to follow the codes on that and require that those be done by codes, and he's done that, and he doesn't design these things, that's not his job, what he does is review designs that have been submitted to him by the engineer for the Adams, his name is Brad Gilson, he's a licensed engineer who's done this. Also, because the, the Fugeas had sent us information from some engineers and folks that they had retained, we wanted to take advantage of that expertise, and so David Alter, we, first of all, we provided him with everything that had been provided to us from other experts that the Fugeas may have read. from other experts that the Fujas may have, the several engineers they had retained. And second, we, we instructed, or, I'm saying, instructed, but just said, David, feel free to reach out to these folks and, you know, let's, let's, let's let the professionals work together. And let's let the professionals do their job. That's why they have the training, that's why they have the expertise. Let's try to keep it away from anything else other than, you know, let's do what's right, let's do the right thing, let's make sure things are built safe. And that process is ongoing, he's done, I think, a good job. And, you know, certain things have been sent back to Mr. Gilson to say, we need some more calculations on this and things. So that's the process we're taking now. I have to tell you that not many cities have done this, that I've been involved with, and I've been involved with a lot of cities as either on the city side or on the other side. Because it's not cheap. It's, you know, Mr. Alter has, he's not doing this for free, he's not, he's not retired like Ron Ivy, who will come and, you know, do favors for me. He's a, he's a licensed working engineer and we have to pay him for that, that time. But again, the approach that, I was instructed by Mayor Prey and I agreed with a hundred percent was, let's do the right thing, let's make sure we can, anything we can check and make sure it's done safe, let's do that. And that's the approach we've taken. You know, whenever you're in the middle of a situation like this between two sides, you're never gonna be popular. There's gonna be a lot of unhappy people on one side or the other, it's kind of like being a judge. You know, judges don't make friends every day when they make rulings, because there's always one party. And that's kind of the cit, the situation the city's been in. And obviously, there are probably people on both whatever side, all sides of these issues, that think we've not done a good job. All I'm saying is, we, we've tried to come in and do the best we can. The city staff has been very cooperative with that. Anything I've recommended to the mayor, she's okay. You know, when I said, let's hire this David Alter and it's not cheap, you know, we did it. And that's the approach we've taken, you know, and I, I'm, I've done this stuff a long time. I've represented a lot of cities for a lot of years, I've been, and I, you know, I'm, I'm professionally satisfied with what we're doing here, I believe we're doing the right thing. And going above and beyond what we would have to legally do. Because legally, we could just have our building official make all these decisions. And, and that would be it. But instead, you know, had Mr. Alter come in, he then makes a recommendation to our building official, who has the authority to enforce those and we're enforcing them. So that's, that's kind of the update on the situation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have, I don't know if you want questions from the audience. That's up to you, not me, your, your meeting, not mine. But I'm happy to try to answer any questions and anybody has or, you know, give more details on something. I know I, I've been told, once was told by a court reporter, I was the fastest talker they'd ever had in their court back, we used to have court reporters. So I know I talk fast, we don't have those, except from federal court anymore. So I know I've talked fast and try to cover a lot of ground quickly, because I know, the other thing I know is that you folks don't get, I get paid to be here, because you hired me to be your city attorney. You don't get paid to be here, this is your public service and I don't want to waste people's time. I know you've got a long agenda, a lot of things to cover. And I want to be helpful, but I also don't want to just say, man, Craig Smith came here and bored us for an hour and I fell asleep at my desk here while he was, you know, giving me the intricacies of building officials and building codes.
I have one quick question, just to clarify, because we do get a lot of calls about this. And a lot of people who stop in this at the grocery store or where, or on the street at the mailboxes. So out of, there's been four appeals, two of them have been dismissed, the other two have been combined. But we probably will be dealing with them for a couple of more years, one to two more years.
Yeah, I mean, there is a process and people have the right to exercise their rights under that process.
Right, so for our citizens, we just have to know that we are patiently waiting for those decisions, that we are doing all that we are supposed to do with regards to the legality of that, but we will have to wait. And so the idea of just get this over with is, is not necessarily accurate, because we have to go through the process which does take time. So I just wanted to clarify that, so those that are listening will know that we're doing all we can to expedite it, but at the same time, we recognize the limitations of the court.
That's right, and that's exactly right. And, you know, courts are gonna take the time, I can't call up the fourth district court or the court of appeals and say, you're too slow or taking too much time. That's just not what, within our power, they'll take the time they think is appropriate. And these things will take time. So yeah, we'll probably a year from now, still be involved with some of these, maybe even two years from now. My hope is to get the things all done. We're, we're trying to encourage the final plans and we're, right now, I know we got, I got an email today said, well, you're trying to brush some, something through so you can announce it to the council. I don't have anything to announce about any approved plans tonight. That's not my job. I wouldn't do it anyway, but what we have is, you know, we're trying to, but we are trying to get things done. So, you know, this costs money, this costs, you know, obviously, a lot of feelings. People get upset and I understand that. So my view is, you know, it's kind of a little bit like an open wound and the sooner we can work our way through that, get the things built, build, get them built right. Now, I'm not saying cut corners, that's not ever what we've said, but let's get the rest of the improvements done, built right. You know, and the reason why the landscaping's so important, landscaping is not so much the landscaping, it's to make sure that the drainage doesn't impact neighboring properties. You know, we have challenges here, this again reminds me a lot of my early days in Park City. You have a lot of challenges with construction here that most cities don't have, because most cities don't have the hillsides and slopes that you have here. And anybody you talk to in the building industry, engineers, those are always challenges and your whole city is that way. I mean, some cities have, you know, maybe a little park, cities like West Valley have none. They're much bigger, but, you know, we do have challenges that we face here because of the topography that we are, you know, and people like living in the hills. I'd like to live here myself, frankly, because I think it's a beautiful place and you're up in the trees and it's very enjoyable and, but, you know, it's not the easiest place to build. And also, that also leads to sometimes different opinions by experts as to what is the right thing to do. And into, to address those kind of topographical challenges that we have.
Question, so number three and number four have been combined, were they given a new case number? Or how could we refer to those?
I, I, they typically do a combined case number, I don't know, but it's not on there, that means I haven't seen it yet, but I can get it to you so you can follow that. Because you, there is ways, and you know that, to look up things on the courts and see what's happening on the court system. We'll get you that, that combined number.
I think that would be helpful. At least for me.
Any other questions from you, the council, too?
I, I think I have one, it's kind of hard to phrase, but it's been suggested by some, it's some citizens that the city should just forget all of this legal action and just do what one of the parties wants done. Because apparently, they believe that they're correct. What are the negatives of doing that, or is it even possible to do that?
I would never advise you to do that, because I think it's illegal to do that. We have two, you know, in this situation, we have two different parties, each of them have certain legal rights. Obviously, a property owner has certain rights with their property. And there, and as any property owner in town is, you're entitled to develop, build on your property as long as you follow the standards that you're supposed to follow in zoning and all those kind of things. And I think that's a very important property right, and I think our legislature, our constitution thinks that too. On the other hand, we have another party, as neighboring properties have it, have rights as a diversely affected parties. And what we have is a legal system with these appeals and things that have been put into place so that those rights can both be recognized and balanced and a decision made. You know, when there are disputes about those things. And that's just, that's what we have to do, we can't just decide, well, you know, this has been expensive and tired, we're tired of this, we're just gonna do this. And, no, we have two parties that have legal rights and the right to exercise those as the law provides, and that's what we're going to do. And
That, that's good, because I, I appreciate some of those words that you, you've used. So that I can now use those in return as I talk, or people ask me these questions, I can give them some good, solid answers.
Now, if somebody lived across the town, they would have to, to exercise those rights. They would have for me, if I decided I wanted to come down and appeal something, I don't live in the city. I would have to show that I was, first of all, I would have to be a resident city, but then, second of all, I'd show that I was somehow injured or could be injured in a way special to me, that's not just the general public.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Jody, did you?
I put him to sleep.
Okay. Yeah, but she put her hand down.
Oh, she did, great.
Sharon, do you still have a question?
Um, one other thing that I, this is more for us. I'd like to make this available to all the citizens so that they can also
Yes.
Know what's going on.
That's okay, right? Yeah, that's fine, that's what I wrote it, I actually put in there, it's up to you how you want to distribute, make it available. I just thought it'd be helpful to have something that everybody could see. And again, we, one of, one of the aspects of, of what we do is try to be transparent and open about things. And so this is something that, you know, can help inform the public as to what's going on, because I'm sure a lot of people have questions, I would have questions, because there's been a lot of talk about it and a fair amount of money spent on it. And if I'm a taxpayer, I'm concerned, you know, what's my money being spent for?
Yeah, we can put that on a website.
Yeah.
So that's, my thought is to make that, you know, available to anybody that cares to read it.
Okay, Sharon?
I, I could not hear it being asked to talk, that's why I lowered my hand, because I, I didn't know if this is the proper time to ask a few questions, may I ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay, when Mr. Smith was talking about people's rights, are you entitled to falsify contour lines? Is that your right to falsify contour lines?
Falsify contour lines?
Yes, if your contour lines are significantly different than on, on your plans and what they are on the, on the contour, on geographic maps, do you have that right to do that, to just falsify lines?
I, I would take that outside of the context of, of rights.
Okay.
I think what, how that's addressed is, you know, if you're, first of all, I could not draw a contour line myself and I doubt many people in this room could.
Well, I could, because I grew up working for my father, who's a very strict engineer, so I understand.
I, you know, I'm dumb, that's why I became a lawyer. If I had, if I could do math, I would be doing something different than this, I can tell you. But, no, I'm just kidding, but, but yeah, no, I mean, if, if contour lines should be accurate, sometimes they're not. If they're not accurate, then we would make them be redone to be accurate before we would rely on.
Okay, so if that was pointed out to our city officials that those contour lines may be incorrect, shouldn't it have fallen upon their shoulders to say, let's examine this?
Well, I think we did have a review of all the, when you're talking about contour lines, you're talking about, just for everybody understanding what I think is being talked about is the slope of outside, we're not talking about inside buildings, we're talking about the slope of things. And I think that was raised, and my recollection is that that was reviewed. And maybe I'm wrong on that, but I believe that that's one of the things we had David Alter look at to make sure they
Alter didn't come into the picture until two years after the building was built. It should have been, it was brought to our city officials' attention back in March of 2019. And through communications back and forth, it was said that this should probably be red tagged. I can give you citation of that, and, and yet, nothing was ever done. Now, John F. Kennedy said, "An error does not become a mistake until you refuse to correct it." And I think it's become, gone even way, way, way past being a mistake here. At first, it was an error.
Yeah, no, I guess I have to, to maybe politely and respectfully disagree a little bit with you here, because right now, we have just recently been looking at the landscaping plans. And I know there's been changes in the last six months on those and have been part of the review. I'm not aware of anything that was finalized as far as the contours two years ago.
It might be worth it for you to go back and study that.
Well, my, my point, I guess my point is this, we're not using, you know, what we're doing is looking at plans we have now. Where we're doing those plans and far as I know, that we've got accurate contour lines. And the other thing I would suggest is if, if anybody feels like an engineer, and I'd say the same thing for an attorney, if an engineer, they feel like they've submitted falsified documents, we do have a engineers or, or under the governed by the state of Utah, Division of Professional Licensing. And if, if somebody thinks an engineer has done something improper, just like an attorney, you can call the bar, make a complaint to the bar. If, if somebody believes an engineer has deliberately provide falsified plans to, or contours, I would invite them to contact this, this Division of Professional Licensing, state of Utah and file a complaint, because that shouldn't happen.
So all of these, all of these letters ad nauseam from well-qualified engineers who are saying this is an extremely dangerous situation, those have all been ignored to, as far as I can tell.
Respectfully disagree with that, they have, all that information's been reviewed, we've had our, our independent engineer review those. Obviously, professionals can have different opinions on things, but they had, I, I, I think it's incorrect to try to label those as being ignored because they have not been ignored.
Okay, well, I, I will, in my mind, that is the whole, at the crux of this whole problem. Could I ask you, Mr. Smith, how much has your firm made from our city thus far?
I have not the faintest idea.
Well, it was budgeted at $10,000 per month to, and, and, so that's $120,000 that our taxpayers are being charged to squabble over the law. And it, and Carrie just said that this could probably take a year or two or maybe more. It's been known to take up to 10 years sometimes to get these resolved. Are we just going to have to keep paying $10,000 a month to get this, to fight these things? Can't we go to litigation, to, to mediation? What's wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong with mediation. I've used it many times, I'm a big proponent of mediation. I'm happy to use it in this situation, in fact, I'm getting ready to respond to a request for mediation which if I hadn't been so busy with my other clients and doing other things, I would have responded by now, but I, I'm happy to do that. I'd love to get this thing over with, just like I think, like everybody else in this room would. And there's nothing, believe me, I have, I'm not trying, and there's, and anybody, come to my office and spend a day with me, you'll see, I do not have time to try to prolong this situation. I have many other clients, many who are private clients who pay a lot higher rate than the discounted rate I give to this city and other cities I work for, and they have plenty of work for me. So I have no, I have no, you know, nothing to gain by, I would like to see this resolved as quickly, fairly and efficiently as possible, recognizing that these are important issues and everybody has, we have to respect people's rights in doing this. We, it's not like it's, you know, the Soviet Union and you just dictate something and it's done.
No, you've recommended mediation recently and we, we're on board, so if we can get that arranged, we'll
Just so everybody knows what mediation is, if you haven't, anybody who's been into mediation, it's where you have a neutral party who is hired by the, the parties and then the, you have a mediation here, meeting, it's not really a hearing meeting. And that neutral mediator, a lot of times it's a retired judge, it's people that do this for a living, you know, try to, to help the parties come to an agreement. And it's a, it's a great tool, and I, like I say, I'm a big fan, that's one of the things I've seen in my legal career. I remember when I did my first mediation, it was very unusual to do it, now we do them, you know, all the time. And I think the reason that's the case is they're very, it can be, it can be a very effective way. However, mediation does not require anybody to, that's
It's not binding.
Not make a decision and you don't have to settle your, your dispute. You can decide not to and, you know, that happens too.
Can I also make a, a comment?
Yes.
Just because I feel like there, there was some emotion behind Sharon's comment and I don't blame her for that emotion. But at no time since I've, I've been on this city council, have we ignored any citizen and anything that they have ever said. However, what happens when a citizen says something is that then becomes a claim. And I'm gonna use that term because I think it's accurate. It's a claim, and that's all it is. But then what we do with that claim is we have to investigate the claim. And we have to, you know, go through the process where we ask other people and ask experts, you know, because again, as I've stated multiple times about this matter, I am not an engineer, I am not a builder, I'm a software programmer. So if you want to make a claim about software, I can I'm a software programmer. So if you want to make a claim about software, I can answer that question. But when it comes to building and other issues, I'm unable to do that. So I go to experts who can. And each one of the claims that has been brought up has been investigated. We've asked those questions. Now, the one issue that has made things difficult with this situation is that almost from the very get-go, the city was given notice that we were being sued.
Or, or-
That we- Once that happens, as a city, we are, it's, it's like placing shackles on us where we're unable to make responses. We can't just talk to people. Now, all of a sudden, we have to play the lawyer game where everything goes through a lawyer and everything becomes more expensive and it's just, and it's harder. And so, you know, this situation has been tough from the very get-go because of the circumstances that we've been under. I have been an advocate from the very beginning of mediation on this because I did feel like most of the issues were the kinds of issues that if we could just sit down and talk about them, then we'd be fine. But again, once the, the court proceeding started, mediation became kind of off the table. I'm hoping we can get it back on the table. But at the same time, the citizens need to know that no one has been ignored. No one has been, um, no claim has gone uninvestigated. Um, the very first claim about this issue was about trees that got cut down on, on one of the neighbor's properties. And that was the first claim that was given to me, and I investigated that one too. So anyway, that's, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that no one has been ignoring this.
Any other questions, comments from you, counsel?
I can just say one more thing. Again, David Alter not only got all the written materials from any expert that would provide those, he reached out and talked directly to experts that were hired by the fugites and the engineer and expert, being expert, these are all engineers that was hired by the, and his first goal was to try to come to a consensus. He has on a few things. But when a consensus can't be reached, then we've asked David Alter to use his best professional judgment and make a decision because we have to make a decision. We can't just, you can't go on forever trying to, you know, you can't reach a consensus.
Right.
But, and I think that, that having him reach out to both sides is highly, I would call Salt, I'd call Salt Lake City or anybody else, or any of the cities in this valley, I bet most of them have never done that, ever. They just say, no, we have our, you know, our person's going to do their job and we're not going to involve, you know, other people, experts that they may have hired.
Okay, thank you. All right. Appreciate that. That's very helpful. Good information for us and for, I'm sure, many of our citizens to be able to hear and it's a tough situation and we're trying to work through it. Hopefully, we can get it resolved sooner than later. All right.
Can we let the citizens know when that might be on the website?
Oh.
For people who are listening. Jody, how long will it take tomorrow?
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, all right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the proposed changes to the accessory building height.
I don't have any questions on that one.
Anybody? Okay. Uh, the next thing is the temporary restriction on using semi-trailers or shipping containers.
So that one, I, I appreciated some of the public comment on that one. And I, I would like to propose that we just add language that specifically exempts temporary. Now, we, we also want to be careful here too.
How do we define temporary?
We need to define not only what temporary means, but we also need to define, um, like, how many shipping containers are okay? And how many, you know, how much space and where can it be? And, you know, anyway, so I'd just like to maybe send it back to the planning commission to add those little polishing points. Would that be okay, Wayne?
Well, right now, we're, we're just approving the temporary restriction. So we could do that, and then they can
Oh, okay.
Put all those other
Yeah, that's fine.
Things in their consideration.
I would like, I would also like them to consider that, uh, we, we specified that these accessory buildings are not for livable structures, not as a tiny home. I know- Okay, just to make sure because there was an incident recently at a girls camp that used these, and the snow load, of course, was not compatible and, um, it would have been quite dangerous had there been people inside.
My only, my only question is, if these exist in our city today, putting this restriction on to stop it, what, what, what about those that exist? And I don't even know if they do, but if they do, I, I'm asking for them.
There's at least one.
Wayne?
This one, that one. Those were approved.
Okay.
Okay, Severn? Okay.
Okay, so even with this restriction then, we would leave those alone?
The ones that were approved will be left alone. Yep, admitted.
Okay.
All right, Corbett?
Even, even though there are structures in town, structures illegal?
Well, if, if the code has always said you have to have a building permit that's over 200 square feet, just because you move something in and you don't get caught, doesn't make it legal, right?
That's right.
Yep. Okay.
So if, so if we had some, uh, motivation to enforce that, those that are illegal could be required to be removed?
Yes.
I think it's the bottom line of what we're saying here.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking. Okay. But those that are legal are grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, the next thing are the, uh, proposed changes to the corner lot setbacks.
We've discussed this quite a bit, and I think part of the discussion earlier is that this actually lessens the setbacks that helps those citizens that have a corner lot. And, and I think that maybe was missed before. Is that it, it gives you more room.
I think I would like a little more information about, like, whenever I see ordinance changes like this, I always want to know, who asked?
Who, what prompted it?
What prompted it? And that, I think, is-
There, there must be a case.
My biggest question.
This is my idea. Well, I, I'll take ownership of this. And my concern was that if you are not on a corner lot, and let's say you're in R1-2PUD, side setback is 15 feet. And your, your corner lot next to you, that setback from that 15 feet is 30 feet. And so what we're really saying in this change is where the setback is 15 feet to your neighbor, your setback can be 15 feet. And so if you have two lots side by side, the buildings can be 30 feet apart. And that's legit. But if you're on a corner lot and it's next to you, then all of a sudden you're 45 feet apart. And so it just seemed, since we've already taken away their building
The lot, yeah.
What they can build in and have reduced it in an R1-2PUD, we've reduced it by 35 feet. Because we make it to 50 feet from the front and 50 feet from the side. They're on the streets. And so we're giving them back 15 feet. We're still not giving them back everything that they lost, but we're giving them back 15 feet of what they lost.
Just because it's a corner lot.
Yeah.
And does this apply to all zoning? Or is there specific zoning that it applies to?
Applies to all zoning.
Okay.
Can I clarify something? It applies to all zones, but it's only the, it's the setbacks assigned to that zone.
Yes.
So R119, a front setback is different than an R12 PUD? I mean, you, you realize that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question? So if you're on a corner lot, which is the front and which is the side?
The front door is the front.
Okay. Because, because the rear is determined by which is the front, so.
But, but any side that is adjoining a road
Can be the front.
Is, can be the front.
Right.
And so you could have two backs.
So the front's not determined until-
The house is built.
There really is only one front. Wherever the front door is.
That's right.
And it could be on the side street or it could be on the main street.
And it could theoretically be on the side.
I've seen it on the side.
I, I think what Severn's saying, and it's accurate, I mean, at some point, we have to say, what road is that house on?
Right, I agree.
What, yeah.
And so even, even the few houses that we have that chose to do a-
So, but that, so that's determined by where we put, yeah.
I mean, we pick, we pick it whether it was by coin flip or whatever.
Right, okay.
Does the post office-
All right. Any other questions or discussion on that?
So there's multiple checks there.
Okay, then. Number five, the, uh, development and construction standard for sidewalks, walking paths, bike paths, and trails. Adding the sidewalk to both sides of the road.
No questions.
Okay.
I think that's a good decision to go forward with.
Uh, the next thing on the agenda is the proposed development agreement between the city of Woodland Hills and Summit Creek.
Did we, uh, jump from fuel reduction at city water tanks?
That's number seven.
We're at number six.
Yeah, we're at number six.
Y'all keep using the wrong stuff.
Sorry.
We're using the one that was on the table.
No, I'm using the, I'm, I'm using the one that's-
Online.
Sorry.
I'm using, I'm using the only approved one.
Hey, I approved this one.
Yeah.
It's got a program check.
Okay. Uh, the development agreement. Dave and Paul, you kind of had an assignment too?
Yeah, so that, I think we're going to meet, if we get this, this meeting, if it finishes early enough, we're going to meet after this meeting, Wayne, Dave, and I, to review our notes. Uh, we've sent our comments to Craig and Ethan, um, recently, and, and then we're scheduled, I believe we're scheduled to, to talk tomorrow at 7:30 with Summit Creek. And have that discussion going on.
And, and, and the hope is, nothing against you, Craig, but we're hoping that we can do a little more preliminary work before we need to involve Craig.
That's great. Yeah, that's fine.
So
So just the two of you are meeting with them tomorrow.
Or save, save some money.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, hopefully, let's grease those wheels as much as we can, but let's, uh, take the time you need to make sure it's done right. Thank you. Okay, number seven, fuel reduction at the city water tanks. Craig?
He's got his own mic.
Yeah.
All right.
He's important, he's got his own mic.
Yeah, this is something we've never tried before.
Yeah, put on your seatbelt.
We did have, uh, we had a resident turn in a complaint about one of our pieces of property up at the well. We've got, uh, quite some large stacks of dead wood, uh, timber trees. And so Doral and I went up and looked at it last week, and we're looking, yeah. We probably can't even get a chipper down in there, so we'd have to drag it out. But we're looking at hundreds of man-hours to clean this piece up. So I called county fire crews. Um, they came up and visited us with this last Thursday and looked at the possibility of burning a couple piles up at the, up at the well. So they said it could be done, especially with some snow on the ground. We've got Corbett set us up with water and sprinklers around it. Uh, it's, it's a large, open space. So we would just, all we'd have to do is pull the trees up out of the, the living trees, pile them up, and we'd probably do three or four piles. And then county fire would come up and burn them for us. And we have to stay with the same guidelines that everybody else does, uh, Green Burn Day. We've got to let county know, county fire marshal. And, but it's in, it's in our ordinances that we can do it. So, and it saves us a lot of money.
Yeah.
And when are we thinking of doing it? So that we can make sure that it's, it's giving out notice to our residents, like they're not afraid.
We will, we'll, we'll put out information before we do it.
Will we have other fire departments on standby, or will they be here, or what's that of the?
I'll invite all the local agencies. The thing about county fires, they only work Monday through Thursday this time of year, and they're on a short crew.
Okay.
So, but we will have, I mean, everybody else will be on call just like, like anything else. We'll be here. I have a feeling maybe some of the departments would like to come up and, and participate in it.
And this is going to be a multiple-day burn?
No, they said we could burn it all in one day.
It'll, it'll burn up in one day. That's good.
We, we do have to pull it to where it can be burnt. It's, it's not moved yet, but-
How long has this stuff been there?
Hmm, a couple of years.
Couple of years.
Where did it come from?
It's good and dead. Just up on our mitigation site up there.
Ah, okay.
So we're planning on, they also said something about the stumps that are up there. And I'm just going to get one of these containers that we got now. I'll get it up there. I'll just load the stumps and give it up.
If, if any council or ma, citizen or anyone wants to go look at what we're talking about, I'd be happy to get, get you up there and have a look at it. It's, uh, it's doable, and it's the probably, it's the best way to do it. It would be so hard to, to chip it and cut it up.
Yes, we've had a good wet month.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what the county too would require. I mean, they're not going to do it if it, if they can go sideways on them. Oh, and they've done quite a bit of them. They have to have a burn boss on-site before they can burn, so. It's, it's not like we're burning it. We've got some people that want to help.
Are you saying you're not safe?
Now, if you want to, well, yeah, yeah. I've got light and fires. You know, that's a little different than putting them out.
Well, we appreciate your, um, creativity and diligence on this.
Well, and I think, you know, looking in the future, I think, again, you know, we need to just, when we're doing construction, when we're doing mitigation, when we're doing, uh, rock line ditch, it's whatever it is we're doing, you know, we need to make sure that we're following the best practices as well as everyone else. I mean, we should emulate what we expect our citizens to do, so.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Craig, if you need help hauling the stumps to your burn place, we'll be happy to help. I say if you need volunteers to come up and help move the trees and stuff, just let us know. We'll be happy to help.
Okay, thank you. That's great. You guys are always willing. All right, uh, number eight, the proposed amendment to City Code 1-5-5B. That is, um, Jody, is that the employee, um, so we have this, that random obscure bit in our code that we noticed that said that any, uh, city employee has to be a resident of the city. And we just want to take the resident word out so that we can employ people that aren't, you know, clarify that we can employ people that don't live in the city. So that's what that is. Any questions about that?
No, I read it over. It seems clear to me.
Yeah, it's pretty clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, number nine, oh man, hours and hours.
It looks like a lot of hours.
And I didn't even finish. I didn't, I didn't get Corbett's job done. Um, but I'm still working on it, but, uh-
I opened that zip drive and went, ugh.
There's a lot of work.
I've been working on it hours and hours. Um, so the, we made, basically updated the employee policy manual overall in lots of areas. There are a couple that have, still have to have some legal approval and, um, some HR things that Chris has to fill in details for us. Um, but then I did the, we got the, uh, job descriptions done for the finance director and the deputy recorder. And the treasurer.
I just want to thank our mayor for all of that work. I started to open those emails and look at all of those, and each email had a whole bunch of documents, and it was impressive. And I see you've spent a lot of hours on that.
Well, and that's, I mean, for months when I've been saying, I'm working on it. I-
You really were.
Big, big effort. Thank you.
And I will apologize. I didn't read all of- And I will apologize, I didn't read all of them, but.
I don't blame you.
It seems like because of how comprehensive they are, um, I'd just like to have a good review of them. Anyway, do we, do we have, like, well, first off, who did, did you do that all on your own, or was there some?
No, it actually, um, we actually got it started by hiring Debbie Meacham, who was the director of the dispatch, uh, the previous one. And when she retired, then we hired her to consult with us and develop the, kind of the.
The framework.
The framework of the manual, and she used a lot of what they had at dispatch already, so, um, we used that, and then we went through it, and Chris and I've gone through it pretty at length to make sure that it's, it fits our city, and, um, I think Beth did a little with me too on it, so. And then, and the things that need to be, um, approved, that we feel like need to be approved legally, we'll have the attorneys approve those before we put them on the table.
I'm just wondering, could we post it on the website so that we could maybe get feedback, um, before we approve it, just?
Wouldn't we want it to be, I mean, I would like, rather have gone through some technical experience first, especially the ones that are legal, before we're getting more and more feedback, if, if in case we're just taking it out anyways, I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry, Dave, but I'm not sure that we need public input on the, the details of, of how the administrative side of the city government manages the employees. I think that the council needs to have input on that, but I, I don't know. Uh, in defining the, the job, I, I think that's the mayor's responsibility, uh, and, and we have some oversight responsibility. I, I, I don't know what we're gonna get from doing that.
I kind of, I agree with you, Bob, this reminds me a whole lot of the standard operating guidelines of our fire department that we worked on for two years. Finally, it comes out as a thick book, and we're still changing it, this is a work in progress. I think, I think we get out there the best we can to start with, and then we just keep them in mind and, and update them as, and even the employee has a right to say, hey, I'm asked to do this now, would you add it to this?
Mm-hmm.
And it just, it just continues through the years, but starting is what I'm impressed with about how much you've got in there, and that's worth getting out right away as soon as you deem it's clean enough with the attorney and so on.
My biggest concern is that there's so much there, I'm having a hard time getting my head around all of it at one time, and I, I would almost like to see just, you know, one or two of them per month that we do, where we can actually, you know, sit down and read it and comprehend it rather than try to speed read it.
Okay, what about, um, what if we approve the descriptions tonight? If you guys had a chance to look at those, and then we can do the rest of it by segments? You know, I mean, because some of them are very short, you know, they're just a page.
Yes.
And, and part of the benefit of how it's formatted is that I think it will be easy to amend things that need to be amended, because you don't have to go through a hole, you can just pull that one segment out, amend that segment.
And I, I read the, the descriptions, and yeah, they are short, and, and I was able to understand that in, in the short amount of time, not, not that you didn't, that you sprung this on us, it's just that the volume of it.
Yeah, sorry.
The four or five days is a short period of time.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I, I would, I would think it'd be good to, to move forward on something, not just roll it down the, the street.
I mean, because you have been working on it for so long, excuse me, I think it would be nice if we could get this totally passed before you end your tenure as, as mayor, as a, you know, because you have worked so hard on it, and, and I think it, we can do our due diligence and, and read through it before, before our last meeting.
So, so if we could kind of divide it up in the number of, of meetings that we have?
That's two.
There's two meetings? So that's, that's fifty-fifty.
It is two months, though.
That's better than that, I think.
Yes, it is, well, and so, I mean, so we could, just so, so I'm clear, so tonight we can approve the, the three job descriptions that I got done. And then we can divide the rest of the handbook into, into half.
Yeah.
The half and half.
Yeah, that, that's, that's better than that.
Okay. And if there are things that, that you have concerns or heartburn about, we can certainly address them.
Well, I, I think we have, as we do it, we have to, to, uh, pay attention to what Doral said, and that is, is that, that it is a living document, it is gonna need to be refined over and over and over again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it gets better.
Yeah. And it's almost like you need to have a, an annual review of them between, between you and the, the employee that does that, to make sure it's still accurate.
That's, yes, that it stays current.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, next item, city council reports, uh, Doral, Public Safety and.
I'll go fast, I'll go fast, you have to listen quickly or you'll miss. I have a, I have a meeting scheduled with Jeremy Cero at MAG on November ninth, he has created that grant proposal for a trail.
Great.
It is a great, great plan, and I'm excited to meet with him and them on, in November. Woodland Hills Outdoors has put at the park the split rail fencing parts, um, that's at the park now, October twenty-first it was delivered. October twenty-nine and thirty, they're asking, they're going to get volunteers, and, uh, Jimmy DeGraffenreid will be drilling the holes, and five or six volunteers will be putting posts in the ground, and the fence will start to go up, so, looking forward to that, they are going to.
When's that door?
Twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
This Friday, Saturday.
It is, this Friday and Saturday. Woodland Hills Outdoors is managing that.
Well, there's, there's two aspects.
Oh, thanks, Bob.
Greg and I spoke today, he's gonna go to some of the, uh, young men organizations in the, in the community and see if he can get a few young men to help. If he has problems there because of timing, then he's gonna reach out to me, and I will, uh, see what I can do to, to, to get some people, uh, we don't need a lot, you know, half a dozen is more than probably enough. But, but the first part of it is gonna be learning the process, and once we get that down, then we can maybe have a couple of crews and, and knock it out quick, but.
If there's a need, I'd like to.
Sure. I'll write that down.
Okay?
Thanks.
This, this is live news, I just got a text from our fire chief, there are two dumpsters in the city now, one's at Maple and one's in the, at the park for brush. So, uh, there's green, green dump, yeah, so.
We did post it in the newsletter and on the social media, and we've already had some people that, in their goodness, have put their grass clippings and their leaves in black plastic bags and then thrown them in the dumpster. The problem is, is that ruins the whole dumpster, so please take your things out of your plastic bags before you dump them.
Just green, yeah.
Yeah, green only.
Thank you. So again, those are at Maple and at the park.
And I'd just like to reiterate that we have done this before, and the reason it was successful and we can do it again is because our citizens have been so good to, um, comply with the.
So, exactly.
The regulations.
I really commend Chris Helvey and, and our chief for getting the price of these dumpsters way down, because it was not going to be possible. When we got the first quote, it was not gonna happen, so, these are.
South Valley Waste, is that what it is, yeah?
Yeah, it was South Valley Waste, and we're gonna be trying to place more dumpsters this week to add to those.
Yeah.
So anyway, these are really great, our citizens.
Miracle that they worked with, with Craig, and Craig was able to get a price that we could afford.
The first quote scared us, so. Okay, we have a trunk or treat this Saturday, starting, uh, from six to eight.
It's okay, he's doing part of it.
Fire truck will be there, and, and I think Bob's got a bunch of stuff going on, I'll quit now and let you talk. Parks and Trails Committee, um, there's a lot going on there, and, uh, there'll be more coming, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold on some of those reports, but, but there are, uh, there, there's some effort there, and, and they're, they're, they're trying to collect and do a good job, they finished a survey, we'll get that survey, um, announced to the council when, when it's appropriate. And I'll just say that our fire calls and medical calls have really been quiet for five weeks, so whatever you citizens, whatever you citizens are, whatever you're doing, keep doing it. Yeah, yeah, anyway, we love it, so thanks, thanks for, right, thanks, Rachel.
And our new captain's here.
But, but remember, we start to get, we start to get nervous, because when we don't have any calls, we don't, we don't even remember how to dress, you know, so, so we have training tomorrow, and we're trying to kick that in gear again, so. All right, I'm done, I'm done, anyway, way to go, citizens.
All right. Paul.
Public Works Roads. So we met earlier this month, uh, Dave compiled some of the details, well, I decided to jump off the call before it was over, but really, we were focusing on the drainage issues, so we looked back at 2009 BOU capstone progress, um, project. And reviewed that, I think most, really most of the time was trying to spend, this is a huge project, trying to figure this out, so, it was talking about scope, trying to figure out what's the scope, what is the purpose, what, what exactly are we being asked to do? And that's why, Dave, I'll need your help, 'cause I, I had to get off the call before that was resolved, if it was resolved, but that was real.
Yeah, no, it's, it is a huge project, because as we've said multiple times tonight, we live on a mountain. And so that becomes a big challenge when it, you know, and again, you know, the storms that we had, can't remember, was it September, was it August, whenever it was. You know, those were like three days' worth of really incredible heavy downpours, and, uh, yeah, so, the idea, uh, so what ended up happening was, um, we appointed three members of the Public Works Committee to kind of form a subcommittee, and their goal is to identify which roads are the worst, put them in a priority order, and then what we'll do is we'll, um, working with Corbett and, and the other, um, employees will, will evaluate, okay, what can we do here to try and fix this area?
And that's where those big storms and rocks are even really helpful, because they, they, they visually showed us, I mean, where the rocks and gravel.
They flushed out the problem.
Well, there's a problem, and there's a problem, the other thing that was interesting is it seemed like there was a, there's a lot of experience on the committee, and there's a lot of history there, and going through this, I think there were a lot of surprises, that there actually are corporate softened cases, uh, oftentimes that are completely buried and have been buried. And so trying to figure out where those might be, how do we undig them, it's gonna be a project, but, um, we've got a good group to be able to pull that off.
Okay. Thank you, um, Carrie, the newsletter communication.
In general, um, things are going well, we have a newsletter going out every week, um, we've been getting a lot of positive feedback, we have over five hundred people receive it every week, and we have, um, nearly eighty percent open rate. So it's been very successful.
I think Chloe's doing a really good job.
Really like that, she and I, so if any of you ever have anything that need to be put in, um, let me know, um, and we are trying to keep up on, uh, social media and make sure that people are aware of some of our city events and other issues that are happening, and yes, David.
I should know this, but are we posting those on the city website?
Yes, it goes to, it goes through Everbridge, it goes, uh, through, through email, it goes through the website, and it goes on social media.
Well, the reason I, the reason I mentioned the city website is sometimes it's handy to be able to go back and see the history, and I can't do that with any of those other mechanisms, but with the city website I can, so. And, and whatever we need to do to keep Chloe on this, so, I mean, she's so good.
She's very good, and she and I meet every, every week at, uh, seven-thirty or eight in the morning, so that we can work together before her little kiddos are up, and, uh, she's done a really good job at, uh, at putting that together for us, so.
Well, and I understand, I mean, I, I'm not gonna go into detail, but she was kind of discouraged earlier because she got some, some pretty pointed criticism from, um, but we think she's doing a fabulous job.
Yeah, there were some people who were really harsh, one or two, and, uh.
But you know, that's one or two out of a.
Being a volunteer, so we, I was able, we were able to work together to find out, um, something that would be, um, accommodating to her schedule, meet our needs as a city, and, um, really, I appreciate those citizens that have provided positive feedback. There have been some that have given us suggestions that we have incorporated in, we will be focusing on, um, one ordinance every, every, um, week. Jody and, and the rest of the staff have compiled a list based on what they hear are some of the most important ordinances, as well as then timeliness of which time of year those ordinances seem to be, um, needed, and so, um, we're going, we've been starting that as well as, uh, city events and some of the other things that are happening. Right now, of course, um, the election is one of the number one things that are on, on there, we have continued to post all of the candidates' contact information, so if any citizen, um, isn't sure who is running or how to get ahold of, that is on there. In addition, I should say that, um, several residents have been contacting me that did not receive their ballots, and, um, we put a link, um, there, um, the way our state law is, is that you can, um, go to any of the early voting sites and, um, request a ballot. So don't think if you didn't, if you didn't receive a ballot, you can still vote, either on Election Day or at any of the early voting polls. Just bring your ID, that is an important aspect.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Um, Bob, city events and volunteers.
All right, so we have two big events that are, uh, coming up, uh, the first one is, is this Saturday that, uh, Doral mentioned, uh, the trunk or treat. We have Kathy Anderson and Nanette Baker leading that, and so you know that it's being well taken care of, there's gonna be donuts, hot chocolate, one part of the, the, uh, the parking lot at the State Center will be for trunk or treating, the other part will be, uh, for parking. We will have somebody there to help, uh, make sure that the traffic is, flows smoothly, we're gonna have a haunted house, uh, there, thanks to Sid Thom, Thomas. And a whole bunch of other things that are going on, and not to go on too much about it, but, uh, a, a lot.
Well, and isn't the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints sponsoring it really for us, or hosting it, they're hosting it.
They're hosting it.
Yes, and we appreciate them.
We're paying for it, um, and it's with the, uh, one-twenty-five, the Utah State, uh, Thrive, uh, Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Anniversary of, of Statehood.
Grant.
That's actually paying for it.
Great.
Uh, through that grant. The second one is going to be a, um, let's see, yeah. Where's my notes on this one here? It will be a, uh, Christmas event, uh, lighting the, uh, the Christmas tree that we're gonna kind of have set up there, and, uh, Sherry Berger is leading that for us. And so there's still lots of, of things coming together on that one, but. Pardon me?
Their date?
Um, I'm trying to look and see, she sent me the note, and I'm having a hard time finding that. Sherry, you're on, what, what day?
The tenth, the tenth of December.
Yeah, so it's kind of a split between, between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Friday night.
Yes, Friday night, and it will be at the park, uh, anything you wanna say, Sherry?
Um, so far we've got, Craig's gonna put in, um, Craig and Corbett, I guess the sockets got removed from the temporary, uh, PowerPoint that's out there that, uh, the electric company put in so that we can reach the tree, we're gonna use the tree that's to the right of the Loritzon Field Rock that's already there. Wendy Taylor has agreed to, uh, be lead chorister for caroling, that's why we need to have it on the tenth, because she has commitments with, um, the coral group that she's in in Mapleton, uh, any other dates in December. We're researching Hayride. Bob, is there anything, will we be able to use the city tractor?
I've gotta talk to, to, uh, Craig about, about having them hook up to the, to this, uh, uh, wagon that we're hoping to get from, uh, the Red, the Red, Rally's Red Barn in Santa, and we think that they're gonna let us use one of theirs or a couple of theirs, and then we just need a tractor to tow it, so, uh, I'll talk with Craig, I forgot to do that, thank you, Sherry.
Yeah, great.
We've talked with Wade Snar. We've talked with Wade Snar about organizing a sledding activity, um, what kind of preparation would need to be involved, we need snow, of course, um, and then we have other activities planned, temporarily planned for the children, decorating ornaments, Christmas cookies, while everybody else is on the sleigh ride, so kind of timing this, I'm sure it's gonna be cold, um, so people aren't gonna wanna stay really, really long.
I know, Sherry, that in the past, the, the sledding activities have gone down into property that now has homes on it, so.
Yes.
Just make sure that when you're planning that, that the sledding activity is in a different direction.
That's one of the challenges Wade's working on.
Yeah, 'cause we may be able to use that mound that, um.
Corbett.
The trees were buried under, I don't know if Greg's gonna have up his fencing there along the mitigation pit, we're trying to work all that out.
Okay, thank you. All right, that sounds wonderful so far, thank you for your work on that, both.
That's it.
Sherry and Bob, okay, um, Dave, uh, Public Works Water and Finance Committee.
Um, so we already kind of talked about what we talked about in our Public Works meeting, which really focused on the, the drainage issues throughout the city.
David, on, on water, have they, have they completed for the season the water line replacement project, has that been finished for this season?
No.
They're continuing to do that, all right.
Yeah, so that was, that was.
How long will they be doing that, do you know?
They're done.
I meant, are they, will they continue through the winter, is what I'm saying?
Yeah, they've only got a few, too.
They've only got a few items to finish up, uh, Ted and I talked about it again today, and so he's communicated that with Geneva, both Geneva and Van Con, so, the, they'll wrap it up here pretty quick. When, I don't know.
All right.
Sorry.
I got a call on it today, that's what I said pretty soon, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
Well, and again, you know, you're.
Weather-related.
Not so much weather-related as, as job-related, so, I mean, they're on other jobs now, so they come up here, do some punch list items, and then they go down and do three more jobs in other cities, and then come back up, so it's just, anyway, they'll, they'll get it done, they do though have the punch list, and they're working on that actively, um, and then as far as the Finance Committee, we, um, the Finance Committee is beginning the process of kind of, um, working with the different departments on budget, um, and that's kind of the, the biggest thing, and, um, they also talked and worked with, uh, Craig on the, and Doral on the fire truck, uh, but that's already been approved, so, don't really need to know about that.
Okay, great, thank you, and, um, I'm Personnel, and we talked about that, so, we're good. Anything else that you need to discuss in our work session tonight? All right, um, then it is five till eight, I'll give you five minutes, and at 8 o'clock we'll reconvene for our formal meeting.
How many minutes?
Okay, um, calling to order the City Council meeting for the City of Woodland Hills, tonight is Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, we have our full council in attendance, and I am Mayor Wendy Prey, uh, to begin with, I would like to invite, uh, Councilmember Malkovich to lead us in the pledge, and Councilmember MacArthur to offer an invitation.
All rise.
Definitely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be together tonight, we're grateful for the, uh, the rain that we've received, uh, for the beauty of our city and our environment, we're grateful for the beauty of our citizens and for all that they do, for all the hours and hours of volunteer work they put into making the city a better place, although we ask thy Spirit to be with us as we make decisions and vote on issues that have come before the city, help us to be wise and, and careful in our, in our judgment, and to listen to the voices of our citizens, so we can understand what the needs of the citi, of the city are. Again, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet, we're grateful for the freedoms that allow us to do so, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Carrie and Paul, um, public comment, uh, Jody, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, no requests for public comment, did you see any before the meeting, that written comment, okay. All right, uh, the next, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, the minutes from October 12th.
Do we approve the consent agenda?
Okay, I have a motion from MacArthur and a second from Malkovich, any further questions or discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes and carries unanimously, um, business and discussion issues, the first item is the ordinance amending city code 10-11-2A, 10-11-2B, and 10-11-2C accessory buildings. Jody, do you have, uh, copies of those ordinances? Sorry, I should've asked ahead of time. So this is 2021-22, um, would you like me to read the ordinance, or somebody can move to have the reading waived? Okay, I have a motion to have the reading waived?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from MacArthur and a second from.
Me.
I know, Ottley, thank you, I was like, Bob, um, sorry, all right, all in favor of waiving the reading?
Aye.
All right, um, any, uh, okay, so now I need a motion to pass the ordinance or not?
Can I, can I just really summarize my understanding of what we're running this?
Mm-hmm.
Because if this, if I'm remembering right, we've addressed this, or this issue has come up before, and I think on different occasions, um, citizen, uh, input caused us to say, wait, let's wait a little bit longer, let's refine it a little bit, and, and now we're at a point where, as far as I can tell, we've addressed citizen comments as we felt like we should, and there hasn't been any new comment, so I'm feeling good about it, I guess, is that the right history, my memory, right, ordinance here?
I think you might be mixing up a little with the building height ordinance, this is accessory buildings.
Well, I think now, there was also the, um, RV garage.
Yeah.
Ordinance, and I think that might be.
That's what I remember.
Yes, okay.
So, yeah.
That's what this is, basically.
I think there's, this is just changing kind of how we measure it, and being a little more clear.
Plus, I think it, it makes it, I know Wayne said that the other one was harder to understand, or that you had different, but the way I read the other one is that you were limited to, um, what was it, Wayne?
Seventeen feet.
Seventeen feet.
Or to any part of the roof.
And, and when, you know, people have fifth wheels, you've gotta have almost a 14-foot clearance door opening, and so that only left, that from the top of the door to the peak.
Three feet.
Three feet, which is a pretty flat roof, and so, so I, I think that this is really good for those that want to have an RV garage, uh, it allows them to have it, uh, with, with the right pitch on the roof.
I'll move to, to, um, accept ordinance amending city code 10-2A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from MacArthur and a second from Ottley, any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll pass this around. Uh, the next item is the ordinance adopting a temporary restriction on using semi-trailers or shipping containers as an accessory building, um, it is ordinance 2021-dash what? Did you have any questions or?
I think we had a good discussion during the work, work meeting on that, and it answered a lot of my questions, and I, I think that, uh, it's a good pause to take to, uh, define these things. This is one of those that I may be crazy, but I'm borderline on, I hate to get involved this way in telling people this kind of detail about their own property, but I have visited other cities where they're, they're everywhere, and it, it doesn't look like our city does now, and so, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to support restricting them, so.
And this is a more, a six-month moratorium, basically?
Right.
Just that, so that we can further invest.
And I, I mean, personally, my concern is even more structural safety than.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think, uh, Wayne pointed out a couple weeks ago that they're structurally very safe on their own, but some people wanna bury them or stack them, and then there become some real issues, and that's where I, I have some real heartburn.
And they're not really made for the snow load that we get, and so there is some potential for some, even if they are just a storage container, if someone was in them with a snow load, it could, it could harm them significantly, so I think that they need to be considered for lots of different reasons, not just aesthetics.
I, I would be interested in anybody's experience with hearing of a collapse, because I never have, they're steel and they're pretty dang, I'd be interested in, in some.
Mylan has one.
Okay, I'd, I'd love to know about that, thank you.
If you can regale you later.
Okay.
I'll tell you, I just spent 40 years in that industry, that's what I did for a living, is I'm a little bit of a container shop mechanic.
Uh-huh.
Them collapsing, you might get the roof to sag a little bit, but you could put 30 feet of snow on it.
That's what I thought, they're just so.
When you fill them and stack them, we stacked them seven high-low.
Right, right.
On the ground, and on the ships are the same way.
I mean, they were on.
Structurally, they're okay.
Yeah, the, the structure is at the four corners, it's when you put something in the middle of them, the way, why I talked about them sagging, uh, the structure's in, in the corners, and so if you mess around with them, you could end up in trouble, but if you're just regular using them and.
Sitting out there, you're worried about snow and collapsing, that will probably never happen.
That's what I was thinking.
If you put something on top of it in the middle where it doesn't belong, different story, but it won't collapse, it'll just start to bend, it's never gonna just cave in like instantly.
Right.
Mylan?
Mylan, there's a, there's a mic.
Thank you, yes, so we, uh, we have some of these containers at some girls' camps that they were put up there for sleeping for the girls, and we, we didn't think there'd be a problem, that's why we paid money and put them up there, but, uh, come find out, yeah, they do, the roofs do cave in, I mean, they're not, it's not a total failure, but they're to the point where you, they're, they're not designed for the kind of snow load that we have here, so they will, the top will cave in, because what Bob says is correct, they are very, I mean, they're solid as, you know, as rock solid as my head, you know, and the corners, but in the middle, I, I mean, I could, I could get you pictures and show them to you, that they're basically useless, because the, the doors won't even open and close, and, and all of that, so, it's not so much an imminent failure for life safety, but, uh, you know, again, you, you know, you, you could put a cardboard box there, it's gonna last for a little while, but, you know, do you really want something that's not designed for that?
Yeah.
To be used for that.
Okay, thanks for those updates.
All right, any other discussion, or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll motion.
That we approve ordinance, oh, do you want me to read it, or do you want a motion to waive the reading?
And it's ordinance 2021-dash.
23.
23, temporary land used for moratorium on using semi-trailers and shipping containers as accessory buildings.
Yes.
Made a motion.
To waive the reading? Okay, so Carrie's making a motion to waive the reading and approve the ordinance? Okay, I have a second from MacArthur, any other discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, I will pass this around, Doral, you've got the other one sitting on your desk for you. All right, next item on the agenda is the ordinance amending city code 10-8-5, the minimum corner lot setback, front and rear, and it will be 2021-24.
I move that we pass that ordinance.
Do you, do you want me to read it?
I do not, I've read it many times.
Okay, so you, are you moving to waive the reading?
We waive the reading.
Okay, he's moving to waive the reading and approve this ordinance. Okay, I have a, a motion from Kinnison and a second from MacArthur.
I never get seconds.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the ordinance adopting an alternative development and construction design standard for sidewalks, walking bath, bike, walking paths, bike paths, and trails to be included in the development and construction standards, it will be ordinance 2021-25.
I move that we waive the reading, because you can't read half of it, because it's pictures, and that we approve that ordinance.
Okay. Anyone wanna second that?
I'll second it.
I'll give it to Bob. All right, I have a motion from Pratt and a second from Ottley, any further questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, um. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the fuel reduction at city water tanks, um, Craig's just looking for your approval to have that happen.
Is that something that we need to vote on?
Maybe just because of the fire?
I think we should, because.
Yeah.
It's against our ordinance typically.
Well, it's not, but yeah, it's.
Well, we shouldn't.
It's kind of a.
I, I move that we.
Approve that.
Go through this and approve it, yes.
Do you want a roll call?
I think it's good to have an, uh, an official.
I think so, too. Yeah, I, I'm glad that we're talking about it. It's an uncommon thing.
And we don't want it to be common.
No.
Okay, so I have a motion from Kinnison to give approval to, uh, Friar Chief to pursue that and get that done with the association, with the county.
Yeah, I was gonna say, since we're making motions on this, um, which, again, that's fine, I, but I wanna make sure that it's understood that this is being done under the direction of the county, the county will be the one that is bringing the crews up, lighting the fires, um, we may be doing the gathering of everything together, that's fine, but, um, it's, it's really, and it's being done under, you know, snow has to be on the ground, I mean, it's.
Right.
Lot of precautions.
A lot of precautions.
Okay, so, anyone wanna second Doral's motion, or?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll give it to Carrie, Carrie, so I have a, um, motion from Kinnison and a second from Malkovich, any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so, Greg? Good luck, thank you. All right, the next item is the ordinance amending city code 1-5-5B, and it will be 2021-25, right, Jody?
Yeah. I'll move. We, we.
Waive the reading?
Waive the reading and pass the, this amendment, uh, to city code 1-5-5B.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Malkovich and a second from Kinnison, any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next thing on the agenda is the employee policy manual, and so we decided that we would leave the bulk of the manual off of this one, and just approve the.
Description.
The descri, the descriptions for the finance director, the deputy recorder, and the treasurer, and the public works will come up next time. Should we do those separately, Jody, would that be better, or? Should we do those separately, Jody? Would that be better, or? Okay, we can do all three together.
So we're, we're really approving A, C, and D.
Yes.
Assuming my numbers are the same.
Yes. Your letters are the same.
I move that we approve finance director job description, deputy recorder job description, and treasurer job description.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Ottley and a second from MacArthur. And I would just like to add my appreciation. The employees have worked really hard with me on getting these done too accurately and well. Okay, motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes and carries. Miscellaneous.
I had one miscellaneous.
Yes.
I posted this on social media earlier, but as of today, this is just an FYI. As of today, our city only had a 10% voter turnout rate so far with our mail-in ballots, which is one of the lowest in the county. At our last municipal election, we were second highest. So I just want to encourage everyone to please mail in their ballots. We have, they have to be postmarked by Monday, November 1st. So if you can get them in this week, that would even be better. This is an important election for our city, as we are having, you know, new council member, new, new mayor. It's important that your voice is heard. If you have questions about the process, which is new this year, it's different, or any other questions about the election, feel free to call. If you did not receive a ballot, I can walk you through what to do, so let me know. Or, or Jody, as our election officer, can do the same. But I hope that our Woodland Hills residents will take this seriously and turn in their ballots. 10% is, is a little bit rough for us right now.
And the, we have a good report from the Transparency Committee on the website explaining ranked choice voting also, so.
Yep.
Right, thank you. Anything else, council?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you for your good work.